Mine went hot.
Okay, is that?
Yep, it is. Thank you so much. All right. Yeah, this is working. I'm trying to figure out. Because I'd much prefer to be able to face them instead of looking left and right. And it's a little bit less awkward that way.
Just so you know, for the lightning round, everybody has a car in front of them, so they can just do this.
Does everybody have their yes and no placards? Just want to make sure. Okay, we'll wait another minute just to make sure everybody gets settled. So if everybody gets, start getting settled, that'd be, that'd be wonderful. Thanks so much. Okay, are we ready to go? Okay, let's get started. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, candidates. Thank you so much for being here. My name's Leverett Wing. I am the Executive Director of the Commonwealth Seminar, and it is my pleasure to be here this evening to once again moderate a forum with the City of Malden and candidates for their office. Want to thank all of you, thank all the organizations and the volunteers for being here this evening. We are also live streaming on YouTube. I want to thank everybody for being here. Especially thank you to all the candidates, particularly here for the Ward Council, for taking time out of your busy schedules. I hope everybody here and watching online appreciates the time, the effort, the sacrifice, and nowadays, the courage to run for, for public office. And we're grateful to all of you for your commitment to service. It's an honor for me to be offered the opportunity to once again be a part of a forum here in Malden. I've moderated dozens of forums and debates in the past. And I will say that the mayoral forum that I moderated a couple of years ago was one of my favorites, not just because of the energy and the content, but because of the quality of answers, the discourse, and most importantly, the civility, which I think we can all agree has been sorely lacking in politics for the most recent, recent past. So thank you for this opportunity. We all look forward to a similar evening. A few logistics. All the candidates have received the breakdown in format for tonight's forum, correct? Wonderful. For our ward candidates, there will be three segments. Opening statements of one minute each, my always favorite lightning round of yes or no questions, and slightly more open question regarding each candidate's priorities for their district. Each candidate will have two minutes to discuss their priorities. And after each candidate has gone, they will each have one minute to talk about their solution to an issue that I, yes, I, will curate from, from your, from your two-minute statements. There will be no closing statements from the Ward Council forum. So thank you all so much once again for being here. Actually, I do want to thank the organizations. My, I was remiss in thanking the organization putting this together, the Asian Community Development Corporation, Greater Malden, Asian American Community Coalition, the Chinese Progressive Association, the Asian Pacific Islanders Civic Action Network, the Mystic River Watershed Association, the Mass Senior Action Council, and also the Urban Media Arts for, Urban Media Arts for your resources in streaming this online. So also, and most importantly, thank you to the City of Malden for offering us this wonderful, wonderful facility to host tonight's forum. So thank you, all of you, for being here on a, on a, actually a very, what turned out to be a very pleasant evening. You could be anywhere else, and you are here listening to all of us. So I guess we will begin with our candidate opening statements. We will go closest to me on the way down. And then when we conduct our next questions, we'll go sort of reverse order. So, so, Counselor.
Hi, and again, I think we're all going to say this, but thank you so much for having this forum and allowing us to kind of talk to everybody in the community. I am Peg Crowe. I am the Ward One City Councilor. I was born in Malden. I actually moved out. And then quickly, I realized, there's no place like home. So when I came back to Malden, I decided that I was going to commit myself to my community. I bought a house in Malden, which actually was my grandparents' house. So I'm really excited about that. But then I started working at a nonprofit right here in Malden. I'm now the Executive Director of the Malden, of a nonprofit right here in Malden. So I'm really committed to supporting everybody here in Malden.
Hi, my name is Bryn Garrity. I'm running for city council in Ward One. I am a business owner in town. I own The Crew, which is an indoor rowing studio just down the street, on Pleasant Street. I also coach high school rowing at Somerville High School. I'm a master's rower with General Giant, so I'm on the Mystic and Malden Rivers several days a week. I, for my career, I'm an engineer. I work in commercial property insurance. And I also, I am on Rover and Wag. You might see me there as a dog walker and a house sitter. I am running because I, at my core, am a problem solver. And I have felt Malden stagnating over the last couple of years. I think that there are things being left on the table for residents and constituents in Malden. And I want to be the one to step up and make the change and bring new ideas, fresh blood, and fresh energy to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryn. Counselor?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. My name's Amanda Linehan. I'm the Ward Three City Council. Me, I represent the city on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. And I also sit on the, I chaired the city's, the committee that was in charge of spending our federal COVID relief funds on affordable housing. So I've got to have a seat at the table, spending a lot of the money that we've had coming in on building affordable housing in the city, which is something that's been hugely important to me. I've worked alongside many of my colleagues in our community development office doing that. And it's been really gratifying to be able to help our residents doing that. I'm also a past ACDC board member, and it's just amazing to be up here. And I'm so thankful for the opportunity to be able to tell you a little bit about my platform. So thank you.
And before we get to you, Counselor O'Malley, just want to point out, we do have our timer here. Mina, thank you so much for doing that. She has our green cards before, I was remiss in mentioning that. And also, if you do hear talking in the back, that is because we have our, our, our form translated into Cantonese, Mandarin, and Vietnamese, which is a wonderful, wonderful breakthrough for us. So that is Anna Seh and Terry Yin, who are doing the, I'm sorry? Okay, my apologies, my apologies, who are doing the translating. So if you do hear talking in the background, that is because we are translating it not only for the folks here, but also for the folks at home. So that, just, just so it doesn't throw you off. Counselor, if you'd like to go.
Thank you to the moderator and our sponsors. My name is Ryan O'Malley. I'm the Ward Four City Counselor. It's rather complicated, but I'm the 2025 Council President. I'm a product of Malden Public Schools. And I'm the youngest city counselor on the city council. And that said, I have over a decade of experience on the city council as an independent voice. I'm a nonprofit executive with Malden Arts, bringing public art to our community. It's something that gives me a lot of meaning. Professionally, I am also a nonprofit attorney that helps create affordable housing in the greater Boston area and across the country. I'm a longtime advocate of climate action and environmental causes, for instance, the Malden River, as well as our urban tree canopy. And I'm also a defender of public assets, whether it's public parks or a public library. I take my oath of office very seriously. And I will always do what I think is right, even if it's not politically expedient. Thank you. I also set a timer.
He's a self-motivator. Thank you for that. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to thank everybody for bringing us together tonight and creating this space for community dialogue and civic engagement. My name is Ari Taylor, and I have had the honor of serving as the Ward Five City Counselor for the past almost two years. I'm very proud of the work that we've accomplished together, from collaborating with neighbors to make our streets safer, to creating our first pocket forest in the city of Malden, supporting local makers through the Girl Game Craft Fair, and also passing a resolution to hold polluters accountable. These are just a few of the examples of how we've worked to make Malden a stronger, more connected community. And this is only the beginning. I look forward to continuing to serve and ensure that Ward Five remains represented, heard, and empowered. And I hope to earn your vote on November 4th, even though I'm running unopposed.
Thank you. Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, hi. I'm Counselor Stephen Winslow, the Ward Six Counselor, running for reelection this term. I really want to thank the organizers tonight for making this possible. My wife and I have lived in Malden since 1989. We co-founded Bike to the Sea, the organization that helped create our local trail and is running the Bike Kitchen right now. I've served both on the city council and the school committee, and I continue to support our schools. My past successes and future priorities show my commitment to youth, seniors, and all of Malden's diverse population. I've worked with Asian youth and city leaders to provide better safety for pedestrians around Malden High and other schools, save bus access to our Asian markets. I have and plan to continue to work with seniors and others to improve our bus service in Maplewood Square and across the city. I did help set up the city's Affordable Housing Trust. And I just want people to remember, Steve Winslow is the hardworking, accomplished, and community-focused choice for Ward Six voters. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your opening statements. Up next is our lightning round, which each candidate will have, has a placard which says yes or no. And when I ask a question, they will hold up their placards saying yes or no. Just as a heads up to our photographer, this is what we call the photo op. So if we could get ready for that, that'd be wonderful. All right, so here we go. Lightning round, question number one. Will you support a policy that will strengthen worker protection and end wage theft? All right, thank you. Question number two. Will you ensure that city contracts pay workers a living wage? Question number three. Will you support dedicated funding to improve language access for city services? Question number four. Will you support implementing additional policies to address housing affordability in Malden? And question number five. Will you support additional resources and policies to strengthen AAPI and immigrant-owned businesses in Malden? Wonderful. Thank you all so much for, for, for your responses with that. And up next, we have our open-ended question. And as I mentioned, each candidate will have two minutes to address the question of what their priority is in their district. And then when, after that, I will ask a question, hopefully related to all of your answers. And then you'll have one minute to respond. So I will, we will begin with, since we start this way, we'll start with Counselor Winslow. What do you see as the two top pressing issues in your ward? And after, actually, the one-minute response, actually, and what will you do to address them? Yep, what do you see as the two, top, top two pressing issues in your ward? And what will you do to address them?
So for this term, I'm particularly focused on a couple of things. Safety and transportation access, as well as improvements in Maplewood Square. So in terms of safety and transportation access, one of the things I find as a ward counselor, I have people persistently asking about safer streets. So I committed some ward funds to do improvements on Maple, up in Maplewood Highlands. And I want to continue to make sure we follow the, the model that's worked on Bainbridge Street to see more opportunities for traffic calming on all our streets. People want to be safe, to be walked down the streets for their kids. I've been committed to making sure kids can walk safely to Salemwood School, Forestdale School, and Linden School. So that's a key thing. I'm also meeting regularly with the MBTA to talk about improvements to bus stops in Maplewood. So that's one of the things, I hope to see more bus shelters. Actually, this is something that will help transportation by consolidating some bus stops and, and reducing delays, but also making better experience for bus riders. In terms of Maplewood Square, we did a, a study with Boston University to help create a vision. I'm continuing to help with that. We've got murals and flowers in Maplewood Square. We want to do more with the businesses there. Look at opportunities for better transportation. We now have Blue Bikes and that type of thing. So it is a big, important thing for me to make sure that we are working and having our own vision by having events like Maplewood Fest and other things to help bring attention to Maplewood Square. So those are kind of the things that I do plan to continue to move forward on and be a big advocate for the Ward Six Maplewood area with the help from Counselor Taylor. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. And I was, I should have asked also in advance, if folks could silence their phones or put them on vibrate or silent, that'd be, that'd be very helpful. So take a moment if you could all do that. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. So I think I have to agree with Counselor Winslow on, on one main point for Ward Five as well, which is safety issues. We've seen a lot of speeding, a lot of traffic issues. We've had several incidences in Ward Five specifically of cars going off the road and into homes and, and damaging property. And in one instance, we unfortunately lost a beloved pet in, in Ward Five. And so we have made some really strong improvements in this area with, with, you know, the traffic line and signage and such that we put in over on the Webster Street area, the humps that we've done on Bainbridge Street, some signage in various areas for, you know, directional signage to make sure that people know where they're going, so there's less, you know, turning around in traffic. But I think we still have a ways to go there. Definitely, we've heard from lots of our, our seniors, they feel unsafe crossing in specific areas. So that is one, one area that I think gets my main focus and attention, because the safety of our community is really at the crux of everything that we do. And that needs to be my biggest priority. I would say from there, really looking around at certain areas of Ward Five, haven't, haven't had a lot of attention. You know, there's a lot of trash, there's a lot of abandoned property, there's a lot of, of neighborhoods that, that I think just haven't had the civic engagement, haven't had their counselor talk to them, you know. And I'd like to start reaching out to them and doing more outreach. We do actually have a lot of immigrant businesses in Ward Five along Salem Street. And I'd like to include them in more of the community and, and make sure that, you know, we're supporting our small businesses, we're supporting these owners that they can flourish and, and really, you know, call Malden home and, and their business can, can do well. So those are my, my, what I see as the two biggest priorities and how I'd like to go about solving them.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Counselor, Counselor O'Malley?
You know, I think that the challenges that our community face don't respect ward lines. So I think what you're going to hear is it's a lot of the same issues that are facing all of our, our neighborhoods. So I would start with like livability, you know, whether that's, you know, economic development and whether or not there are local jobs for people to, to have. I think that's something that really makes Malden a, a place that we could really improve. It's something that I look forward to working with my existing colleagues and potentially new colleagues. How can we bring business to Malden so that you can work near where you live? Another part of that is affordability and being able to afford to live in a community like Malden and the greater Boston area, so you can live near where you work. Some of the things that I have done with my colleagues is pass the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which allows any property in the city of Malden to add a unit. There are some rules related to that, but it is a process that they cannot say no to. They just have to help you get to where the yes, which is really great. You know, reducing barriers to housing, whether it's, you know, reducing parking requirements or allowing density bonuses for affordable housing. These are things that can help Malden really flourish, because there are a lot of people getting priced out. So helping with jobs, helping with housing. And in a related matter, how do you get to your work? Multimodal transportation is something that I care a lot about, and I've really enjoyed working with my colleagues here. Honestly, led by Steve Winslow, who helped get the bike path to our community, the Northern Strand Trail. You know, in that, in that same vein, I've been fighting to bring a new shared-use path called the Spot-Palm Burke Greenway to Malden. It has broad community support. You know, there are also people who are providing really helpful feedback for the people who maybe are not so excited about this. It's making it a better project, so I do appreciate their feedback, too. Safety, crosswalks, speed bumps, safe routes to schools. These are the things that are really affecting our community. The speeding, we've had residents in, in my neighborhood who were also killed by vehicles. You know, a vision zero. And just, you know, to reiterate, jobs, housing, safe streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Linehan?
Thank you. Well, I couldn't agree more in echoing the kind of overarching concerns that my colleagues have raised, that things like affordability and safety getting around are kind of the two themes that I hear about the most. Being a ward counselor, I want to kind of zero in on the things that are project-based in the neighborhood that I would highlight as being kind of the two pivotal things I would focus on as the redevelopment potential that I see in the ward. So in Ward Three, I think that would be the future redevelopment at the Malden Hospital and the potential redevelopment of the courthouse site. So the great news on the Malden Hospital is that we're getting very close to being able to open that new behavioral health facility there. We had hoped to be doing a ribbon-cutting this week, actually, but just waiting on a few state approvals to be able to do that. And so it's looking like it's going to be sometime in the next one to two months. But everything is complete up there. It's beautiful, and we're going to be able to employ a lot of Malden residents. We've successfully fought to keep the MBTA bus service that goes to not only the site, but the neighborhood. That was a long-fought effort on the part of the mayor and myself. And it's really going to be addressing the backlog of care and the mental health crisis that our community and the region at large have been facing. So I'm very proud of that project. And I'm also very happy to be able to announce that just today, we found out that we're getting over $400,000 in state park grant funding to support the acquisition of open space on the site as well. So we're going to be able to start programming some new green space for the community adjacent to the parcel. So I think that's going to be amazing, not just for the ward, but for the neighborhood and for the city at large as well. And then in terms of the courthouse, which I know has been kind of a stalled and frustrating site in the ward, it's right on the edge. To Counselor O'Malley's point, I think ward boundaries are sort of fuzzy for people. And, you know, it's right close to the downtown. It might be in Ward Three, but I think it feels like something that is important to people that live all over the city and that people pass it every day on their way to the T. And, you know, we had certainly hoped to be able to bring a dynamic arts and culture center to the site. And I think economic realities and just the reality of what we're facing in society right now means we're going to have to probably take a more creative approach to bring in arts use there. It may involve having to work with our state delegation to bring a combination of affordable housing, mixed use with that arts use, to get a financial package together, be able to realize that arts and culture use. But that's something that I think is going to be really key, not just for the ward, but for the city, and that I hope can spur economic development along that entire corridor for the good of not just Ward Three, but for the whole downtown and for the whole city. So those are kind of the two things that I see as being really critical facing Ward Three.
Thank you so much. Bryn?
Sorry, I've never used these.
Neither have I.
The two categories that I would focus on, for sure, are enforcement. We were talking a lot about safety, but there are no consequences for the absolutely egregious traffic violations that I have witnessed firsthand. I actually am house-sitting for the couple who lost their dog. His name was Toby. I've worked with them for years, and the owner actually had to have reconstructive surgery on his wrist because of that accident. And there really was no satisfactory resolve and no real consequences for that driver. So enforcement is a, is a big problem here. People, they, they break rules all the time. Parking, driving, cyclists break rules. There's no enforcement of any traffic violations. And that is not only a way to keep the city safer, but it is a revenue stream that we are leaving on the table. I have been a member of the Malden Safe Streets Group for a couple of years now. I know from them, in Ward Two, I believe, they did walking audits recently. I also was the one who suggested that the bike buses that are starting to be introduced be reliable for working parents. So not just... What'd you do? So not just a fun, cutesy one-off, but something that working parents can rely on in their busy schedule to get their kids to school, knowing that they will be safe. I don't, I know volunteers are hard to come by, but from the people that I've spoken to in Malden Safe Streets and around Malden, there are enough people who are willing to step up and be volunteers to have consistent bike and walking buses to school, since we don't have our own bus network. And I'd like to do some more walking audits through, specifically Ward One. Canal Street is a problem. The sidewalks are unusable unless you are an able-bodied person on your own two feet. I, it is the way that I walk to downtown most times. And I regularly see people, especially since there's, there's a retirement home or a, a living facility at the corner of Medford and Canal, people on their, in their walkers, in their wheelchairs, on the street, because they can't use the sidewalk. It's a, it's a huge problem. And then the other issue that I would really love to start focusing on is optional upzoning on Main Street and working on beautifying and increasing the businesses on Commercial. We have these two really large main roads, Main Street, obviously, but then Commercial, that are not only ugly, like there is a clear difference between the Malden Main Street and the Everett Main Street. And then Commercial is just kind of a disaster. Once you get past those Wellington buildings, there is not a lot. And we are leaving a lot of that on the table.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much. Counselor?
Thank you, thank you. So the, I think, I'm going to kind of take a different focus. I think the issues in Ward One and the opportunities in Ward One. I do think the, the river is our next best opportunity. And I think Commercial Street is one of the untapped commercial areas that we really need to kind of look at. We've talked about this a long time. It, it is tough going down there. You, you don't want to walk down some of those streets because they are kind of narrow and they're frightening to walk down. So I think, you know, redeveloping those things are the next best opportunities. So that's an issue, because Ward One actually has one of the largest land areas, I think, in the city that has residential and commercial. So it's very... So, it's very divided. So, you have to think about it in divided in some ways. But, so, I do think safety is absolutely huge. I've been focusing on safety with safe routes to school, with doing some improvements. I do really think that the, the Mall of River Works will really revitalize the Malden River area, and that will help everybody else see the potential that actually it all falls in Ward One, that Ward One has. So, I think my priorities are safety, it always has been, always, always has been. I think the economic development, Mald, Ward One is the next best, best hope, and so, and we're going to tackle those things together.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for your, for your answers to that. The common thread was that I could, I could discern from all the, were these a public, economics, economic development or public safety. So, I think we'll focus, because we only have one minute each response, we'll focus on, on the public safety portion of it. Can you tell, can you share with us one thing that, or one thing that you would like to do, or one thing that you have done to address the public safety issues that are very important to you? And since we came down this way, we'll start going that way with, with, with you, Counselor.
Thank you very much. So, you know, public safety has always been something that I've been, you know, championing. And years ago, actually before we got the Drive 25, it was not even allowed in the state. And I, I advocated at the State House, and I worked with Senator Jalen from Somerville, and then it became a local option. So, I, with other counselors, cha, you know, championed that to make sure we could, we got all slowed down. The other thing is, I've done, I've done lots of improvement projects around our ward with new lighting, new infrastructure, really talk to the neighbors and understanding what they are seeing on the ground, and then done it in, in a way that is, you think outside of the box, and then when it works, you say, now we put this in to actual practice. So, I keep trying to do that, and I will continue to do that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Oh, sure.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Can you name one thing that, regarding public safety, that you have done or that you would like to do to address that particular issue?
So, in my door-knocking for campaigning, one of the, the common threads that I have encountered is residents know what's best for their neighborhood most of the time. And one of the things that I want to implement as a city counselor is regular door-knocking and surveying of residents, so that we know where the issues are, especially, you know, I live in the Bell Rock neighborhood, you live a little bit up the hill. Ward One is big. We can't cover it all. So, we really need to lean on our constituents. I know that just from talking to people, there are multiple people who want to make Walnut and Fairmont a four-way stop. There are residents who want to add speed bumps to their streets. There are residents in the little group of one-way streets where I live, I live on Perkins, who want to change the direction of their streets because drivers speed. If they're down, downhill one-way, they just kind of let go of the brakes. So, I think we need to lean on our residents and ask them what they really need in their neighborhood.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Lynn Anne?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'd say probably the main thing this year that I'm most proud of, I actually co-founded the Malden Safe Streets Group about 18 months ago, and I'm really glad to have seen them become their own freestanding nonprofit organization this past year. Working with them and our city's transportation planner, we were able to get every Malden city, all the Malden City Schools to join the Safe Routes to School program this past year, and that's one of the reasons we were able to start to create the walking buses. I'm also a BB parent. I hear from parents and caregivers every single day about safety concerns around the school. I've brought those safety concerns to the Traffic Commission every single month. We're working on speed humps down at the school. We've added signage. We've written grants. We've added bike racks. Really, anything that parents and caregivers bring me, I turn right around and bring it to the Traffic Commission. I set a goal to go there every month with something, and we've had a great track record of success in bringing those improvements to the school. And I'm going to just keep doing that, because there's nothing more important than our, than our safety around our schools.
Great. Thank you for sharing. Thanks so much. Counselor O'Malley?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, so I, the two areas I would look at is both the transit safety that we've been talking about, but also community trust. So, you know, complete streets, Counselor Crowe was instrumental in getting complete streets to our community, and that basically says, we have a policy as a community that when we're going to build our roads, we're going to build them for all users, automobiles, pedestrians, and cyclists. And that's only to keep everyone safe. And you need, there are times when you can share the road with those different uses, and there's times when you cannot. And so, for me personally, what I really want to see is that when I'm older, I can age in place, and I want to be able to get to my doctor, get to my social engagements, get to the supermarket in a way that does not require me to use a vehicle that could endanger others when I'm older. So, I want to be able to get there with a bike or, or, but, uh, uh, walking in a safe way that I'm also safe. Community trust, we're an immigrant community, we're an immigrant nation, and I just want everyone in our community to know that we are here to help defend you. Everyone deserves due process rights. We have rights in our community, and we are here to defend you when you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I don't think that when I joined the council, I realized how much time I would spend in Traffic Commission meetings, but it does seem like that has become something I go to regularly. And I think it's been the most important part. So, a, as I stated in my previous answer, you know, we've done the relining and signs on Webster Street. There are seven new speed humps on Bainbridge. There are, there is signage on Pierce Street, redirecting traffic to go the correct way. Where does that leave us now? The intersection of Bryant and Salem, outside of Salem Towers, really needs to be reconstructed. We need new traffic lights there. We need a safe way of crossing and, and changing traffic. There are some areas on Lebanon Street that I have spoken, you know, that is the next complete streets project that I've worked with Counselor Winslow on getting that relined to make it safer for folks. There's the, oh, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Winslow?
Yes, you know, I'm proud that when I got elected back in 2017, the first thing one of the first we did was to get the complete streets policy passed by the council and continuing to implement that. I know, like, working with residents and businesses, you know, safety reflects on quality of life and people's ability to get to their local businesses. So, Maplewood Square is not going to thrive unless it's a safe place to walk, bike, and, and take your car to. So, that is the type of thing that I'm, I'm focused on. Lebanon Street is getting queued up. We just got rid of all the lead lines there. We will be redoing that. We got to look at, make sure that's a complete street. Broadway and Eastern Avenue are mi, big, big projects that we are queuing up to get state and federal funding for. Those need to be made, made safe. Literally, people have to try to cross Broadway from Broadway Plaza with no crosswalks, no traffic signals. We really need to think of that to make that safe, and that all benefits people using our businesses. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all so much for your efficiency and your thoroughness. Very much appreciate that. And that draws to a close our, our district council forum. I want to thank all of the counselors for being here tonight. The, the ones who are unopposed, I want to say thank you, because obviously you are, you do not have an opponent, and you could, you could very clearly just say, no, I don't have an opponent, and not show up. So, we want to thank you for, for being here, showing up, and for, for sharing all of, with all the questions we asked to the two counselors who are contesting. I want to say thank you for, for this. I have been, as I mentioned, I have, I have moderated several debates, and it's not always that cordial. So, I'm going to say thank you to, thank you to the both of you for, for this, and thank you for, for sharing. And to, and I, I will say this, I, I said this at the end of the mayoral forum that we did a couple of years ago. It really does speak wonderfully of the city of Malden for the quality of candidates that you all have fielded, and to the professionalism, the cordiality of discourse that has been shown here today. So, I want to applaud all of you for the candidates that you, that you foster. So, thank all of you for here, for being here. We will have our at-large forum after a brief break, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, depending on, five? Okay, I was going to say five minutes, no, 10 minutes. Please come back here in about 10 minutes. I want to thank all of you once again. Oh, Counselor O'Malley, thank you for controlling the mic. I appreciate that. All right. Have a good evening, and we will see you back here in 10 minutes. Thank you. Some, we do have some refreshments. We have some bao. We do have some bao that you can take here and eat outside, if folks would like to do that. It'd be better if I did it individually.
We have to be all the time.
I, you know, you have to feel like, has a meaning to it, meaning to you. It's, it's not very good.
Karen, Colongay, thank you. You did a great job. I was here for the mayoral.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming tonight. I, I didn't do it.
I didn't do it. So, we do have some refreshments. We have some bao. We do have some bao that you can take here and eat outside if folks would like to do that. It'd be better if I did it individually.
The messages of the people around them. And I believe I do have a skill at helping people to understand those around them.
Michelle LeWong.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Michelle LeWong. I'm running to be one of your next Malden City Councilors-at-Large. I'm a lifelong Malden resident, a small business owner with my husband, and a proud community advocate. My husband hails from Vietnam, so my family is a multicultural family. So that is what I've embraced for 25 years. And I've also had the unique time of seeing things from the other side and the other point of view and the challenges that the Asian community faces. I'm raising my two daughters on the street I grew up on. I'm a former school committee member, where I launched an anti-bully task force and a special education audit. I have stood up for youth and women through the Zonta Club, helped bring visually impaired tools through the Malden Lions Club, to the Malden Public Library, and this year served as treasurer to help open Malden's first Asian-American Community Center through GMAC, Greater Malden Asian-American Community Coalition. I'm on leave till after the election, but I just wanted to say that I will help to build Malden that we all believe in.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
Good evening. I'm truly delighted to be here today with some of Malden's most dedicated community groups for our AAPI community. Growing up in New York, my closest friends were Chinese, and their restaurant was the second home to me. Our culture shared many similarities, and from an early age, I recognized that we faced similar struggles. That's why I'm proud of the concrete steps I've taken in Malden to stand as a genuine ally to our Asian neighbors and friends. One of the first actions I took when I was here in Malden was to mediate complaints about a Massachusetts anti-discrimination regarding the ping-pong tables in the senior center. Through restorative justice circles, we ended up coming to a good conclusion with that, and it ended up leading to lots of dialogues, the East-Meast-West dialogues with the Chinese Culture Connection. And collaborating with Malden Core and GMAC, we helped organize candlelight vigils outside to mourn and honor the lives of those lost to anti-Asian hate in Malden.
Thank you.
That's fast.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Thank you all so much for being so thorough in such a short period of time. We very much appreciate that. Now photographer, we are on to our lightning round. If you missed it the first time, this is the photo op as well. So you're all set to go? All right, so we have five questions that we will ask. If you all have your little placards up with the yes or no's, okay. And once I ask, then you will show your placards. Question number one: Will you support a policy that will strengthen worker protection and end wage theft? All right, thank you. Question number two: Will you ensure that city contracts pay workers a living wage? Question number three: Will you support dedicated funding to improve language access for city Question number four: Will you support implementing additional policies to address housing affordability in Malden? And finally, question number five: Will you support additional resources and policies to strengthen API and immigrant-owned businesses in Malden? Wonderful, thank you all so much. Now we are on to our open-ended questions, which once again were curated by our organizing team. Thank you to our organizing team for putting these together. You will have, Lena, two minutes for each? Okay, two minutes for each of these. And we will begin going in reverse order with Counselor Colin Hayes. Question number one: What does partnership mean to you? How would you build partnerships with community and cultural organizations to advance inclusion and equity across age, race, ethnicity, and immigrant status?
That's a great question, thank you so much. Actually, I'm a born collaborator, that is what I do. I'm a social worker. I have brought many groups here together in Malden over the past 30 years. The first one was a neighborhood group, which was Friends of Oak Grove, Inc., and that was to bring neighborhoods together and make them safer. We did also Malden Core, which is community organizing for racial equity, which also brought many, many groups and folks in Malden together. One of the biggest things that I was proud of is Malden's promise, a lot of people might remember that. We met, there was about 20 different organizations part of that group, and that took a lot of work. And we moved forward together to lower the dropout rate at Malden High School from 7.7 to 3.2 within two years, and that was by collaboration. Collaboration and working together is the only way to get things done. You use resources wisely, you can meet together so that you're not the only organization taking on a load of whatever the issue is that you're working on. But that is something that I honestly is in my heart and soul, it's what I was born to do, it's what I will continue to do as your city counselor. Thank you.
Wonderful. Would you like me to reread the question, or are you good to go?
I'm good.
All right, and if anybody would like me to reread the question, just let me know. Okay.
Thank you. I actually started my advocacy, the community advocacy work that I've done back probably 30 years ago with the Fight for Ferryway Green. And that took a lot of different people along different economic and cultural backgrounds to working on the, working with the Lions Club, to working with Zonta, to representing Zonta on the Mass Coalition to End Child Marriage. And that took many different organizations and many different people to come together across our state to get that passed in 2022, which I was absolutely hugely part of. It was also my experience in working with our state contingency. So I'm definitely a collaborator, and with GMAC, I was thrilled to be able to work on the mayor's monthly meeting for transliteration, which we now see with our ballots, which is amazing. And I'll continue to be a collaborator. Bottom line, I listen, I collaborate, and I advocate for all of Malden. And that's what I'll continue to do, and that's what I hope to do on the city council.
Thank you. Davidoff, would you like me to reread it, or are you good? Okay, please.
Hopefully good. When I look at, and I've been involved in a number, like everyone else here, I've been involved in a number of different organizations. I've held leadership roles in countless different organizations. And as I said in my opening statement, communication is the key. Understanding is the key. The first step to partnering and helping such groups is to actually reach out, and reach out to as many as possible. There are different methods, there are different requirements depending on the groups you're talking about. I will lean heavily on the language and translation offices through the city government. The real issue becomes communicating with groups and finding what the issues are first, and what the blockages to communication are. And I really think that's where people tend to drop the ball.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Counselor?
Thank you. I might be the first to say it, but I think Malden has done an exceptional job the last 20 years with our outreach in the community. Malden's always been very ethnically diverse anyways, it's just now those different ethnicity groups have moved on and new ones have come in here. But obviously, we can always do more. But from my perspective, I think the city of Malden has an amazing amount of outreach. We obviously have to do better with technology and getting in front of people with their language. But I think empathy and respect, the two most important things when you're talking about any individual, regardless of where they're from and their background. If you understand their culture, you respect their culture, you're willing to learn and help it out. And I think we've created a lot of small forums in the city through either private organizations or, you know, buildings like the Malden Teen Center and the Senior Center. And in this building right now, we've opened up, we've had these forums, we've had these outreach. There's a lot of festivals that happen in this community. I'm not saying Malden's the model, but I think we've done a tremendous amount of job, and there's always more great work to be done. What I would also say is, I think being in the same room and talking to individuals and sharing our cultures together is very important. As much as technology is great and wonderful today, I also think sometimes that puts a barrier up for us and doesn't really allow us to understand that other person's perspective. And just by the diversity in this city, especially in the school systems, that breaks down those barriers. Because our kids and my kids get to share the same room with the diverse student body here, and I think that's very important to build tolerance. Again, I think there's a lot of way for us to go, but I think Malden, compared to some of our sister neighborhoods and cities here, has done a fantastic job of doing great strides. I think this is a showcase of that, right? We've done this a couple of years, 10 years ago, we would have never done this. So I'm very hopeful, I'm very excited, and I'm also positive about how Malden's moving forward.
Counselor?
Yeah, I actually would like you to reread the question if you could, because I just want to make sure that I'm answering it at this point.
What does partnership mean to you? How would you build partnership with community and cultural organizations to advance inclusion and equity across age, race, ethnicity, and immigrant status?
Thank you so much for this question. It's a profound question. And I want to say that trust is earned, it is not just given. And in order to be trusted, you must be trustworthy. And I think that can be hard for us as elected officials sometimes, when it's easy to say the right thing, when the cameras are on. And then the question is, what do you do when you're not in front of a camera and you are fighting for the values that you say that you believe in? So I'll give you an example, language, translation, and access. I said in a city council forum just like this two years ago that I would not vote for a city budget that did not have direct investment in language access and translation services. And in our city budget the following year, there was a question about whether we could cut some of those budgets. And I said, not in front of cameras. I said, no, I will not vote for that budget. I was joined by some of my colleagues, and that funding remained. I have worked behind the scenes with the Malden Chamber of Commerce to give them a grant to do outreach to immigrant and minority and women-owned businesses, which I think has given folks access to more ways to improve their businesses and build wealth here in Malden. And I have been a member or a liaison to our Racial Equity Commission as a counselor, our Climate Action Plan Steering Committee, which is helping us create clean energy and protect our community from rising temperatures and worsening storms, as well as our new Police Community Advisory Council that helps people talk about what public safety means to them and how to be safe. And for all of those groups, I have always ensured that we have translated materials available and that we are doing direct outreach in the language and the culture that makes most sense to our residents. So that's what I'm committed to continuing in that same kind of approach and being trustworthy for the Asian community, for all parts of our community. It is truly a privilege to collaborate with community leaders, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Wonderful. And continuing on our circuit, I guess you will be first for the next question, which is number two: The extended trash strike presented significant quality-of-life challenges to residents. What is your approach to addressing quality-of-life issues in Malden?
I'll tell you, it's a lot easier canvassing now that the trash strike is over. And what I saw during the trash strike was our city leaders working as hard as they could in a tough situation. I think it matters to our residents that their leaders listen and try. Now, in the trash strike, we were locked into a long-term contract, we didn't have control of the situation. But there are a lot of things that we do have more control over. And I think being responsive, letting residents know that they're heard, how to get their question answered, even if the answer isn't the one that they want, is really important. As a counselor-at-large, I get to represent the whole city, and that means I get to look at the big picture. And when someone has an individual question about a dangerous intersection, I always, of course, talk to the ward counselor. But I also try to zoom out and see the big picture, which is why I advocated for citywide funding for traffic calming. So that's speed bumps, that's, you know, better crosswalks and signage, and that's the funding that then could be put towards the speed bumps that we have now on Bainbridge, which I'm very excited about and fully support. But we have speeding corridors all over the city, and the number-one safety concern I hear is about just being able to walk down the street and cross safely. So I, as a leader, need to reflect back to the people that I hear what they're saying. I have heard concerns about public safety, I share those concerns about being able to walk and bike and roll safely. And I want to make sure that I then follow up on those things, and I tell our residents the pieces that I'm doing. Just one other thing that I'll say about city services, is that in order to sustain our city services, we have to have a functioning city budget. And right now, we have a city budget gap, both because most cities and towns do with the cost of healthcare, and because the state is requiring us to invest in our schools, which is great. But I hope we talk more about that. As the chair of the Finance Committee, I want to make sure that we have the support to continue those strong city services.
Thank you. Counselors, Counselor Spatafor?
Yeah, thank you very much. I would say that I think if I asked this, if we asked this question six months ago, where trash stood on the priority list, it would be a much different answer, right, from that perspective. So we all learned that the collection of trash is paramount to a safe and vibrant community, right? We saw a lot of good come out of the community, I think the city did everything they could in their power, I think we were very adaptive, we were clear and concise in our communication. And I think most residents in the city did the right thing, and that's the most important thing when any type of, I would say, neighborhood quality of life, right? And you can talk about everything from our rat infestation, which we're trying to tackle, to several councils up here on this committee, some are hosting the mics, that are big advocates of improving our tree canopies, right, and looking at our environmental sustainability. And things like that are just as important, I think, as making sure we're cracking down on speeding inside the city, which is probably the number-two issue or one issue, depending on the day, with inside our neighborhoods. I think just having clear communication and listening to the residents, as at-large, like Counsel McDonald said, you have to look at the entire city and not do something that might affect one area adversely and make the other one look better. I really believe, too, you also have to be honest with the residents, because some residents are not going to want your answer, so you have to set boundaries. There's a lot of reasons we have ordinance in this city, from road control to the reason why we want you to put your trash receptacles. That's just as important, that brings the quality of life to everybody. Health is a big concern for this community, I think we've all realized that after the pandemic, and we are becoming more dense, and that becomes something that I think rises to the top, just as much as public safety, just as much as making sure our roads and our sidewalks are safe for everybody. So I believe is getting out of the neighborhoods. I've always been a protector of the neighborhoods, I think the downtown areas and the squares are where we can thrive. But when it gets to the neighborhoods, I think that's where the quality of life really has to be understanding. And, you know, some of the things that have popped up the last couple of years, a lot more people are doing gardening, right? There's rules and regulations we have to enforce there. Thank you.
And good counselor. Solomon?
It always fascinates me in a forum like this, how much you start to say, okay, yeah, I'm going to piggyback off everyone who just spoke. And being right in the middle, I'm going to be doing that a lot. Quality-of-life issues are different for everyone, and that's something we have to understand. The tree canopy is essential, but also safe visibility is essential. And I've seen areas where they finally have a good tree covering, and then the streetlights get blocked. And so you almost have to choose between the two, and I'd like to find ways to avoid having to make that choice, between a safe living environment and a safe living environment, just a different sort. I have focused a lot of my discussions with people on safety, especially in relation to what are referred to as micro-mobility access. I think that the city ordinances could be better monitored. We have safety issues involving bikes and scooters and other things, where the smaller vehicles aren't necessarily being checked as often. There are people who are required in certain circumstances to wear helmets, where that hasn't been paid attention to. And there are people who drive smaller, ride smaller vehicles, who have ignored any traffic laws in areas. And unfortunately, those are issues that are important. I would like to see, I'm sure we do sidewalk audits for general safety, I'd like to see them for mobility issues, for all mobility issues. I've talked to a number of people who are vision impaired, who find small cracks that have been deemed okay for wheelchairs, and yet their sticks get stuck in them, and they can't find their way forward. As I said before, we need to broaden communication, not only the language office. I've already pledged, I'm, as an educator, I'm used to the concept of office hours. I pledge to hold regular meetings.
Wonderful, thank you. And just so you know, even before you said that, I was going to spice things up, or spicy as process can be. We were going to start with you for question number three, and then work this way, and then back around the other way. And so for question number four, we'll start with Counselor Hayes, question number five, Counselor McDonald. So be careful what you ask for, because you might get it. Okay, I'm just kidding. All right, thank you so much. Yes, please.
Thank you so much. So one of the things, you know, looking at the quality of life, and I think it depends on where we're looking at it. So for me, when I was on school committee, quality of life for me was to make sure that parents had a voice. And it's very, very upsetting for a parent to have a disabled child and not feel like they have a voice, not feel like their services are taken care of, and especially during the COVID timeframe. So I worked hard to get that special education audit through. I'm also a bully survivor. So for me, it was very important to make sure that every single child felt safe in school, and I'm staying committed to that. I'm also an educational advocate, as my daughter is dyslexic and she's in her 20s now, but, so I fought for those services, and I've helped people across the whole city. It never really mattered to me that they weren't in Ward Seven where I was served, it mattered to help them. And then I'd work with their prospective representative. You know, fast forward, I've actually, you know, as I'm not going to talk in as everybody else has, I've seen the streets in Ward Three, Ward Five, and Ward Seven just not passable. So, and most of the time, it's the trees that are coming, the tree roots are coming over and coming through. So I've already talked to the tree warden, and he has a fabulous aging tree plan. So I'd like to see that, where grants can be put into place to make sure our sidewalks are ADA compliant across the whole city. One of the other things that I've seen during COVID is that the whole city came together to help one another. And we started again during this trash strike, many neighborhoods and people who were helping people to bring their trash and to help people, the elderly and the people that couldn't get by. And I just want to see a lot more of that, I want to see the whole city coming together. We leave our attitudes at the doors and just do what's best for Malden, and come together as Malden needs us to be, whether it's on budget, whether it's for school safety, regular safety, whatever we can come up with in all facets and all sizes. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Could you repeat the question?
Of course.
I heard trash in there somewhere, that's why.
The extended trash strike presented significant quality-of-life challenges to residents. What is your approach to addressing quality-of-life issues in Malden?
Okay, thank you. So earlier, we heard a lot of the ward counselors talk about quality-of-life issues. They're usually, from my experience, the ones like that are right hands-on with like sidewalks, and I trust them, they're doing their job. During, as a counselor-at-large, I look at the bigger picture, and especially during the trash strike, I was out on the picket lines, I was out listening to people. So one of the things that you can count on me to do, I post, I'm a lot on social media, because that's where a lot of people are, I go to a lot of community events, I ask people what they feel, I do surveys, I ask them what they care about, and then I try and work towards that. And one of the things I heard during the whole trash strike was public health issues. So I did work and get in contact with our public health department and made sure that when I was hearing that rats were by schools, that rats were, you know, where all this garbage was, that our sidewalks were unsafe because there was lots of recycling on the streets, I kind of focused in on that, where I could help. So I tried to get the word out, I actually did carry a lot of our, I have a big van and a truck, and we did help our neighbors get recycling down to where they had to go. But as far as like, big-picture health items, I also work on the, it's a community health and wellbeing report with Cambridge Health Alliance, and that really takes in for Malden, it's something that we should all be using, and we will be using probably on our grants. But it takes, it's a year-long process where we have data now that we can look at all of the health and wellbeing of Malden, that takes into consideration all of these things that we address. It's now published, I'll be calling them in front of the city council so that we can hear about those, because there's people doing the work on, you know, out in the ground. So we just need to get that information to the public, and so that it's well-known. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you very much. So question number three, we will start with Solomon, and then again, we will work down through Counselor Spatafor, and then all the way around. So what are your priorities related to environmental policy in Malden? What do you want to see the city leading on in terms of environmental and climate issues? No, oh, no, it's Solomon, he's just collecting his thoughts.
No, I'm just writing down the question in full. All right. You're right, it does take away that time to prep.
Exactly.
So when I think about what really strikes me most about looking at climate issues, I'm, I have to focus more on, there are certain ordinances that I'm not, that I can't bring up at my fingertips. I have not been on council as long as, say, Councilman Spatafora and others, but I think our best bet is to look at what the current regulations are, and in certain cases, what we can increase, what we can decrease. We've got honestly reasonable, a reasonable starting point. But there are certain issues that came up, especially during the trash debacle of recent, where people left their stuff out, they were told there will not be a delivery, say, of recycling, and there were a number of residents who unfortunately left their stuff out constantly throughout that. And that led to, again, some of the rodent issues. I think what we have to do is, again, broaden the way that we make information available. I think that a number of residents aren't necessarily aware of what resources the city has, and how we can best communicate some of this information about what is available for everyone. So I would be working on our parks primarily, because I think that we've had some issues with them. I've already mentioned the lead contamination issue within Roosevelt Park many times. We've got an answer, we have to actually work on it, we have to get it done.
Thank you very much. Counselor Spatafor?
Yeah, thank you. The environmental issues that face the city are no different, obviously, than they face the world, right? Right now, I don't, nobody can deny that there is certainly a cost to climate action, right? And I think now, more than ever, there are ways that our investment also saves us dollars. And it's not always that easy, and it's never been always that simple, but I think it's very important. So I'll give you an example, the mayor put me on the first Energy Efficiency Committee, and at first, to be quite honest here, we didn't have a full agenda, we were running blind on the dock, because we didn't understand what we had to do. Very quickly, there were some things that came out of that, which we established, getting some electric vehicles, very simple, right? But today, that's very common, right? We have them now that, in all facets. So I think we need to continue down that progress, looking at, some communities actually have invested in fire trucks that now are electric, right? Because the good thing is, hopefully, you don't have to use a fire truck all that often, and if you get away from the diesels and the carbon fuels there, that helps. So I look at, I think it's small steps at looking change in the fleets to electricity. I also, we've talked about the tree canopy that several councils up here have worked on. We've looked at maintaining our parks and bringing up as much green space as possible. I don't think it's one thing we do, but we can talk about the trash. I think the trash shows us that trash is expensive, we have to work on better ways to do recycling and not putting as much food in that system. I know privately, several residents subscribe to that in their own, but I think the city has to look at that way. I think there has to be more opportunity in the city to save water, stretch energy code, leading by example, building our buildings with that stretch energy code. Because to be quite honest, we know it's good for the environment, it's good for our balance sheet. And I think that's very important, now we can put those investments into working dollars to help this community. And Malden has a very old and housing stock, and I think, you know, those are the things sometimes, you enforce those rules, you pass a stretch energy, some residents might not be too happy with the extra cost, but I think it's going to be good for the environment in the long run, good for their family checking account.
Counselor?
Oh, I'm thrilled with this question, I've been waiting three forums for a question on environmentalism, because climate action has been a top priority of mine since I ran for office in 2021. And I am so thrilled to say that Malden has its first climate action plan, which was adopted with the council last year, and a Climate Action and Sustainability Commission of residents who are implementing it. You know, the climate crisis is here, it's a global problem, but we feel it in Malden with rising temperatures and worsening storms and flooding. And there are specific things that we can do, and our plan gives us a comprehensive roadmap for the next generation of work. So what does that include? Converting our buildings. The plan is not just about like trash and green space, it's actually about reducing our emissions while we are ready for the worsening climate crisis, building the resilience of our community. So converting our buildings is at the top
So converting our buildings is at the top of the list. Hundreds of folks are switching from fossil fuels like gas and oil to electricity this, every year. And right now, this year, I'm actually working with our commission to create a coaches program that will help people get through the process, get them access to the grants and the incentives that are out there because it can be really tough to navigate. I replaced my systems. I'm trying to get solar panels before the credits run out this year. And the permitting can be a lot to work through. So that's why we need folks who help not only homeowners, but renters, talk with their landlords and folks who do not speak English as their first language. It's doubly hard to navigate these things. So that's why the coaches program to help people convert their buildings, put clean energy in our homes. It'll be better for asthma rates. It'll be better for our climate impact. So there's a lot of other things in that plan. I encourage you to go to cityofmalden.org/cap, Climate Action Plan, to check it out. And I'll just close by reminding us that many things are already underway. Trees, tree planting, Malden Community Electricity, and many more. Thank you.
Councillor?
Which way we're going? I knew that, I knew that councillor McDonald's going to be thrilled with that question. So climate action, absolutely. It's crucial to protect our public health, reduce environmental risks, save money, ensure sustainability for our city and its residents. I was most concerned in the recent years with our urban heat island effect here in Malden. We are a very densely populated area. And so I was very proud to fight for real grass at Roosevelt Park. And not only Roosevelt Park, but all parks. All parks in our city deserve real grass because again, we are a very dense population and heat island effect is, is coming at us every day. It's getting worse. Also, the council liaison for the open space and Rex Plus Art Plan. So I love to hear all the plans that are in the works to help bring our parks back up to where they need to be, help make sure that we have DPW workers that are able to sustain our, all of our new great green grass parks that we have and it'll ensure that we do what's right for our future generation. The Mystic Valley Watershed Association, I'm also a board member on that and I'm very happy to be a part of cleaning up the waterways and the Malden River. We are going to have an amazing new product down there that's going to have, be able to, we can actually sit and get some relief from heat. And I can't wait for that to open. I've been canoeing on it. It's not ready to, to obviously swim yet, but it is being cleaned and that is something that is really important for our environment. And I think that the Climate Action Plan, I was glad to be a part of that and watch that in progress. It was actually started kind of years ago and really took effect about two years ago. And I went to every meeting, every, okay, I'll just stop there.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you like me to reread or are you, are you good to go?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. So it's odd, you know, coming, I'm at the end. So I want to say, yes, 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 I'm good. We're good. Let's move on. But in all seriousness, I compliment the Climate Action Plan. I think it's outstanding. I would just say that I will 100% support it. I hope to initiate green projects that support that plan and reduce greenhouse gases 100%. I'm a partner and I think it's amazing. You know, I've all, you know, as I was walking and talking and I kind of brought up this before and I had a great conversation with our tree warden, Chris Rosa. If you haven't talked to the man, the man's brilliant, just so you all know. But we talked about, I'm talking to him about how do we fix the sidewalks? And then he had just his own ideas about our aging trees. And we talked about how in Ward Seven specifically, these aging trees, and if we go with his plan, that can hopefully be done with grants. We can have aging trees and reduce Ward Seven, which is the east side of Malden, which is a heat island. We can be able to check off boxes all along the way. And other things that we have already implemented, from the permeable pavements in Forestdale Cemetery, and the list goes on. I'm a data person, so I'll be looking forward to seeing what data has come back for us based on the projects that we've done, you know, which successes and which ones, well, we wish we had a little bit more successes on. So all I can say is that, you know, I am a climate person. I think that we have, we have to make it easy for our residents. We have to make it easy for people that own two-family and three-family homes to be able to ask our tenants to be able to, you know, have electricity. There's programs like Mass Save and the list goes on there as well. So I'm committed. I'm looking forward to working with everybody and being collaborative as I always am. So there you go.
Great. Thank you all very much for your answers there. So question number four, we will start with councillor Hayes. With rising costs, what is your approach to the city's budget to ensure that critical services and schools are adequately funded? And then we'll go councillor Hayes and then the traditional back down this way.
Okay. So this is the hot topic. And we are currently looking into a few things. Right now, many of you probably have heard, we're looking into a Prop Two and a Half override and also at the same time, reducing, no, increasing our residential tax abatement to our, to our homes. So those are two things that we can look at now, but I'm thinking we need to, and I've been an advocate for having more residential and more commercial building. We need to expand our tax base. We need to do more mixed-use building. I know we lost a lot of that with, especially in the downtown. Our zoning doesn't promote like high, I think it's like a three-story, might be four-story minimum. And it doesn't really help if you're trying to do buildings that are probably the best for our city where we get housing and we get commercial base, small businesses. We have a lot of open storefronts right now. We need to really get ahead of it and try and lure people in to be a part of the city. Our city is, has two train stations, lots of good transportation. There's no reason why we should be having open storefronts here. And if we do have open storefronts, I think that we should be taxing, or I don't know if that's the right word, but we could fine them for keeping businesses that have been open for many, many years and we're not collecting any revenue on them. I can name off a few right here, don't want to embarrass them, but we all know who they are. And those big buildings have been open without us collecting any kind of tax revenue and they're just sitting there. So I think that those are things that we can do in the short term while we plan for this long-term, most likely prop override, because it looks like we're, we are really going to be, have a struggle with filling that gap. I'm not sold on it completely, but I'm looking forward to many hearty, in detailed discussions at our finance meetings to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. With rising costs, what is your approach to the city's budget to ensure that critical services and schools are adequately funded?
I personally feel this is a three-pronged approach and one that I, you know, hope that we can all get behind. One is how do we, how do we get through our budget gap as we are now? And I'm a firm believer that we need to take, we, you know, everybody's been talking about a Prop Two and a Half override and we may absolutely have to do that. But before we do that, we have to have a clear idea of what our expenses are and how can we cut some expenses without cutting safety and jobs? So we need to be able to make sure our services are covered and our teachers and our schools are well-funded. You know, a lot, I've heard some people say, oh, we can cut this and cut that. But before we touch police and fire and teachers, what are the response times across the city? That's a lot of data that we have to put in and we have to do our homework first. Then we come back to our, to our residents and ask them, can, this is, this is exactly how much we need for a Prop Two and a Half override. That's the first thing. Second, we do need a master plan instead, and councillor Spatafora and councillor McDonald have both said that in past debates. We need a master plan that covers our commercial base, that creates a whole plan for the whole city. And I would absolutely get behind that. And third, we need to talk to our state contingencies about the Chapter 70 funding. But all that has to happen simultaneously and one can't take a priority over the other because they're all critical to moving ourselves forward.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you very much.
I've said from the beginning of my campaign that there are certain areas where we really have to work our hardest not to cut. First responders, teachers, librarians, those who work within various health-related fields. We depend upon their services and that's what a city government is for in part, to work for the benefit of the people. There are some, I've, I've been asked a couple of times now, or more than a couple, what I felt on the Two and a Half override, and I'm currently unsure. I've already started budgeting my own finances in case that's going to come about. But I look at it as I was not upset when, when the city council voted to actually put it toward the finance committee because I always feel more education, more information, more data is helpful. And to have that data to then present to the city so the residents can also chime in is necessary. I've looked at, I believe that we do need to work with the Chamber of Commerce to encourage more businesses. As has been stated, there are a lot of open storefronts, there are a lot of open areas. I remember one suggestion that we actually take the courthouse that was purchased for, by the city for an art center or held in reserve to actually sell that property. I thought about using it as a physical art center where sections and areas are rented to artists, could then have a gift shop of their, of what they produce, where some of the funds from that also go toward maintaining that center. I think we do have to revisit some of the individual taxes for different areas and different land uses. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councillor Spatafora?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm very excited about this question. I think my fellow councillors know this is something that I've been advocating is really, you know, protecting our commercial tax base. It's, it's like a water balloon, right? Essentially, we have to balance between the three rates we have as industrial, commercial, and residential. And if, in most cities, tax the industrial and residential more. So right now, I think the tax rate between a residential per thousand and commercial is about 58%. But the thing about business you have to realize too, besides just the higher tax rate, right? They're also bringing in other services and fees. They're bringing user taxes, they're bringing, you know, licenses they have to pay for every year, they have personal property taxes for the equipment they have and things like that. But they also bring jobs. So I think it's really a short-term and long-term approach. Listen, we are in a financial crisis right now, but there's opportunity, I think, because we can also change the way the city is run. And we have to look five to 10 years out, whether we get help from some of the school spending formula or not, I think we have to use as an opportunity to right the ship. One way is, I think the long-term is yes, absolutely try to get more commercial space. That's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen tomorrow. But I think we have to at least start planning and get aggressive in that and that is building out areas. The other thing is try to encourage more homeownership, right? Try to get first-time home builders, try to use some, grants are going to be challenging, but I think we have to get people to live here and buy into it because I think they would be more aptible to invest in the community. If you have somebody who's a landlord here, we want good landlords. But when you're in a time like this and you're asking for more money, that landlord's probably not going to want to pay more taxes. That's why I think homeownership at all levels is very important. And I think from the perspective of just looking at the city budget, right? We, we all know what's coming in terms of technology and AI, right? We have to look at five or 10 years out for staffing, whether it be from the police department, the fire department, or even this building. We need to leverage that technology and that might need less people, but at least let's start planning for that now. I just, the idea of just continuing to tax people is not going to, is not the way forward. I understand we have to invest in the community, but I think short-term, yep, I'll shut up.
Thank you so much, councillor.
Thank you. So as I said before, I chair the finance committee and I, we have actually been talking about this for some time. I'm really glad this has now risen to this big public discussion because we really need to have it. The reality is that right now, our budget gap for next year is at least $5 to $6 million. That's maybe not that much in a city budget of $235, $240 million, but it's really concentrated. I think it's important to understand a little bit why we're here. Many cities and towns, I've heard dozens are going to ask for overrides to allow, to let the residents vote whether they want to raise their own tax rate because of the cost of healthcare, because of rising costs. But Malden has this unique situation where the state has required us to invest more in our schools and every year, that target continues to get further away. We've increased school spending on local funds in Malden by 50% since 2019. It was 42 million out of local funds then, it's 62 million out of local funds now. And we still, the state is going to require us to go up even faster next year. So that's good to invest in the schools, but it means that we can't cut the schools to solve this budget crisis. It has to come out of other parts of City Hall. And if you want to try to hold harmless like fire and police, we're now talking about 30 to 40% of the workforce of the rest of City Hall, libraries, public health. That is not something, I will tell you, I am willing to vote for without letting our residents weigh in. I think ultimately, our residents will have to decide the financial future of the city and whether we can vote to bridge where we are now to these excellent economic development strategies that we're talking about. So we're really in the process of talking about it now in finance, no stone unturned. We are going to look at additional cuts as well and other savings opportunities. But I want to make sure that we are not coming back to voters over and over for this, that if we get to the ballot, which I expect we will need to, that we have a long-term plan at the point we are asking residents to invest in this city and make that case.
Thank you, councillor. So question number five, we will start once again with you councillor. If elected, how will you contribute to transparency, accountability, and civility on the city council? Oh, no, the councillor McDonald and then we'll go the traditional route.
So thank you for this. And I have to tell you that some people confess to me that they watch our city council meetings kind of like they watch their soap operas, you know, each week to see what, to see what might happen. And while it is good to help people pay attention to local government, the reality is that I do think that we need to do a better job as your elected leaders at having responsible and dignified, and not just dignified conversation, but conversation and discussion that upholds one another's dignity and the dignity and humanity of our residents. We are a very diverse place. And so we're going to disagree. That's normal, that's expected. And we need to be able to do that without calling each other's character into question, without going behind each other's back, by being willing to lose when we don't have the votes on our side. That's what democracy is. And so when I come up to this dais on Tuesdays, I have a personal set of value commitments to speak respectfully to my colleagues, to do my best not to raise my voice. I'm not saying I've always done it, but that's my commitment, to make sure that I am listening and that I come with an open mind. And I learn things. And it is really important to not make up your mind before you've done your own research, before you've talked and heard from your constituents. And I, I think most importantly, to lead from a place of trying to build understanding and consensus. I work on long-term projects as a councillor at large. The Climate Action Plan that I helped advocate for and I was on the steering committee for, that was an 18-month process that engaged thousands of people to bring them in to decision-making in the city. And now we're committed to carrying that out. And it's a really good plan, but it's good because we had that engagement from language access to youth forums. That's the kind of engagement I want to see on all the big issues in our city. We can do it. Malden actually can be a leader here and I think that's what it takes to elevate the discourse in our city. Thank you.
Councillor Spatafora?
Yeah, let me address the transparency issue because I know this is a buzzword I think we hear every election season, but I, I don't know if all my fellow councillors would agree. I mean, I think Malden is more transparent in the last, you know, 10 years than, than any other time, I think, in, in its history. And I don't think it's just Malden, right? It's just society as, in general. We have the ability to communicate anytime, anywhere, in any medium because of what we carry here, right? I mean, this is really it. When I, when I first became a councillor, you'd get an occasional phone call, once in a while you'd get an email, but now the expectations, just like in our daily life, is really, I need that done and I need it now. So I think transparency is, I think we're really close. Now, there are some things I think residents want to know right away, but sometimes they can't know, contract negotiations, things like that. To councillor, you know, McDonald's point, I think we all have to do a better job of presenting ourselves as a team. At the end of the day, this council is no more effective or less effective without having at least six of us to vote on a bill. That's the reality, right? And, and, and most times, this council really does agree on most things. And, and the good debate which happens in, listen, I'm Italian, sometimes I get a little excited when I'm speaking, right? But that, that passion, I think, is in all of us. We do have to be more compassionate and have empathy for the other, the other individuals. And there's been times that we've swayed, you know, including myself. But I think, I think this council, what you have to ask yourself when you But I think this council, what you have to ask yourself when you're looking at your choices, are the individuals that are going for office able to sit in a room and work together? They don't always have to agree together, can they work together? And I can say, I think, you know, looking across the council I've worked with, nine times out of 10, we always come to that agreement, and it's shown in certain times, and it just makes those ordinances, bills, and that body that much better. And hopefully, it's a reflection of the community getting better.
Thank you, Counselor. Solomon?
I have to challenge one thing you said.
No, that's fine.
And that is, based on my teaching in ethnic studies courses and cultural studies courses, I can tell you, every culture has an issue of, well, we get worked up, we talk, we communicate, we go, everyone.
I can only speak for myself.
Well, I understand that, but, speaking for myself, I can't tell you how often I have upset my wife when she brings up, no, 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 I got, different issue, upset my wife when she's bringing up some argument she's had with someone, or some difficulty she's had somewhere, and I start explaining the other side. It's like, don't you take my side. It isn't a question of not taking her side, it's a question of trying to see where the other side is coming from. And I know I've brought up communication more than once, but I think that is of paramount importance. I agree, as has been said, it's frightening how much information you can find on the city's webpage, and how much material is there that has been translated and is available, and I want there to be more. I want that to be a focus, if possible, of the language office, to broaden the translated material available more and more each year. And I know that will take funding, which is the sticking point for just about everything. As for accountability, I brought this up briefly, but I have pledged to hold, as I said, I've been a college professor and teacher on the high school and middle school levels for over 30 years. The concept of office hours and meeting with students is just a part of life to me. And I pledge to hold regular meetings in different wards, hopefully with the individual ward counselors when I'm there, to speak to the public and find out what their issues are.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and I do empathize with your anecdote about your wife. Ms. Long?
Thank you. I have to say, when I decided to run for office, the idea of working together and bringing Malden together was really the reason, one of the strongest reasons why I ran. And I've always been a collaborator, I've always been about bringing nonprofits together, bringing people together. I actually, as I was running, I've been sitting, I went into a meeting for the Malden Safe Streets and the Keep Malden Moving group, and they couldn't be more different. And there used to be people laughing in the audience, because it's true, they could be absolutely, they're on two sides. And what I was able to see was the collaboration in the middle, and talking to both sides and bringing them together, and they're now going to meet with our police chief and come up with what they both feel is going to be the safety on our streets, and I think it's going to be a meeting that I'd love to see happen, and I think it's going to happen. You know, as I served on the Malden Lions, we realized that we had a lot of money, we had opera money to spend, and how could we do that? We could have just blindly spent it here and there, but we didn't. I collaborated, and I chaired, and I talked to the Disability Commission and said, how can we help visual services in Malden? What do you think? And it wasn't because I didn't want all the glory, it was because that's not my place. My place is to be collaborative. Other people have ideas. It's not just, and I say this all the time, there's no I in team, and we have to stop that at the council level, at the school committee level, and at the Malden level. Everybody has to work together, and that's what I'm committed to. I'm committed to be a professional at all costs. If I have an issue or I don't agree with somebody, I can argue with the best of them, but I can respect their position, and I can respect myself enough to respect them. So that's where I stand, and I hope to receive your vote.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have to say, be honest, that I use my social work skills a lot when we're on the city council meetings, and a lot of conflict resolution, calming down, making sure I don't raise my voice either. But I'm going to speak to transparency right now, that was part of the question. So public trust, like transparency builds trust. I know that there's a lot of mistrust right now due to a lack of transparency, and I don't believe it's a buzzword, it's real, and it's not that we're not doing a good job, we can just always do better. One of the things that I do is I post the agendas on my Facebook page, any social media actually, to get it out there, and I ask for advice back on what we can do to make Malden better. But I feel that giving people information, even if it's not something that, you know, it's not rose-colored glasses information, it's not always fun and games of what we're doing in Malden, but inviting them in so that they're not shocked, so they don't feel like they didn't have all the information, and where did this come from, why are we in this financial state? That's all about transparency, and letting people know both the good and the bad. But as far as working together, and yes, I think I said this the last time, too, on Puerto Rican, we get like a lot of, we get passionate, too, but there's a difference between, you know, being passionate and being disrespectful. I'd like to bring a level of respect to each other when we are in the city council. We should not be agreeing up here, there shouldn't always be something that we're always agreeing on to move us forward. The whole point is to have different points of view, and different points of view that we can listen to respectfully and move forward. That's how I've always worked, that's what I do, and even with the youth council, that was a big, like, it was off, it got voted down twice, but it ended up going through with people just kind of sticking to it and working through. So I'm just hoping to continue what I've been doing up there and not losing my cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. So now we will get to closing statements, where each candidate will have one minute for their closing statements. One more, we will spice it up, and we will start in the middle with Solomon Davidoff. You have one minute for your closing statement, and then we'll work down this way through Counselor Spatafora and McDonald.
All right. First, I would like to thank all of the organizations hosting this today. I've made my position on a variety of points clear through my webpage, but there's always room for improvement on that. I think it is very important for anyone in this kind of position to be listening to the people they want to represent. I did not decide to run because I wanted to hear myself speak. I did not decide to run because I felt that I was prying for public office and to move forward and go to higher office. I wanted to improve things in Malden. I wanted to focus within city council on issues relating to Malden and the residents I feel that we have an incredibly, an incredible city, and I would like to help improve it.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
Thank you. I also want to thank all the organizations that put this together. I want to thank the audience members, I want to thank the moderator, it's been great, you know, these are important. I think this is about outreach, this is about communication, this is about reaching out across the entire city, all our neighbors, but, you know, the decisions that are made inside these, well, there's not four walls, it's round, but the decisions made in this round room, right, affects every group in this city different, and we have to look at that, and it transcends more than just one group, one age demographic, one race, one sex, I think it's important. All I'm asking you is you consider with, I've got 30 seconds, with one of your three votes, that your vote is deliberate, and don't vote with just voting, I want you to vote for that, but I also, from a deliberate vote, is how do we change the future, not just next year, but generations to come? And I think, you know, as many people say, we're at a crossroad. I think the changes that we make over the next two years are really going to have an impact, not just on fiscal stability, but the growth of the city and where we're going, and I promise you I will fight for that. Please consider one of your three votes in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you again to our organizing organizations for this forum and this opportunity, and I want to tell you that I have three priorities this year: sustainability, we've talked about that, both our finances and our environment; affordability, that's utility bills, it's also housing, I'm really committed to helping us build more affordable and market housing; and inclusivity, making sure this is a safe and welcoming community for all. I do think we're at a crossroads in Malden, and we can be watching the news out of Washington, DC every day and feel hopeless, a little bit hopeless. But I want to say that being here in Malden gives me hope when I see the dedicated organizations and volunteers. We are doing multiracial democracy in ways that move us forward. That is a precious thing in this country. Your vote really matters in local elections, because you can have a big impact with just your vote and just your voice getting involved. I hope you'll do that, and I ask for your vote on November 4th, mcdonaldformalden.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you all for being here this evening and engaging in this very important conversation about the future of our community. I'm honored to have the opportunity to share my vision and hear your concerns. Malden is facing increasingly difficult challenges, and we need someone with the experience who will hit the ground running and guide us through these uncertain financial times. I want you to know that every decision I make as a city council is my commitment to all of you. The environmental, educational, and financial reforms that I advocate in Malden for today is what we're going to help for years to come. If you want a counselor who will boldly speak for you and not just follow the status quo or get along to go along, who will speak truth to power and demand the very best for this great city that we live in, I ask for your support and vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As a community advocate for well over 30 years, I've worked hard to listen, to lead with compassion and humanity, and to bring people together, and I'm very passionate, and as your city counselor, I will do the same. I'll prioritize smart infrastructure and transportation improvements, safe streets to all, and a deeper engagement with residents across every language and every neighborhood. This campaign has always been about community. In my experience on the school committee during the worst time, which was COVID, and we still got things done. We transferred 6,000 students over to remote learning, we got things done. I've sat at the state contingency, and I got the Marriage Act passed. I'm a small business owner that has successfully run my business for 25 years, and I am ready to continue to serve. I have extensive nonprofit experience, and I'm passionate, and I'm certainly not status quo, and I will certainly work hard, and I hope to earn one of your three votes on November 4th. You have a nice day.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all so much for such an inspiring debate and uplifting, and thank all of the candidates, both ward, sorry, both ward and at-large for, I'll just say, I've been doing this, don't let my youthful good looks and general immaturity fool you. I have been doing this for a very long time, and it is incredibly uplifting and gratifying to see the civility, the cordiality, the thoughtfulness of answers, both on the at-large and the ward council answers. Thank you for that. And just so you know, whenever I moderate either a debate or a forum, I do research into where I'm going, what I'm getting myself into. And speaking of the soap operas, I've read it, and I want to thank you all for not bringing any of that here, so that we can all get, we can all appreciate all of your answers and all of your thoughtfulness, and really, we do appreciate it so much. If you had told me, alluding to what Counselor Spatafora mentioned earlier, if you had told me 10 years ago that we would have two separate forums, there was another forum earlier with other organizations, if you had told me that there would be two different forums focused on the Asian-American, Pacific Island American community, translated into Mandarin, Cantonese, and Vietnamese, 10 years ago if you told me that, I would have thought that you are an illegal substance that you needed to get off the streets of Malden. But here we are, and I am so grateful to all of you, grateful to the organizations. Look on the screen, please, you can look on the screen to recognize the organizations, and also cherish this room if we can. We're not leaving right away. Cherish this room with everybody that's in it. You have access to the candidates, both the ward candidates have stuck around, the at-large candidates stuck around, the organizers have stuck around. Cherish this room, because this is an important moment, and this is an uplifting moment. This is actually a monumental moment for this community, and I want to thank all of you, thank all of the candidates, and everybody watching on YouTube, and anybody who's going to be watching later for participating this evening. Enjoy the evening, and we will see you on Thursday for the school committee forum. So thank you so much. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. That was wonderful.